I am now.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, time being six oh one, calling being present, I'll call the meeting of the Free Town Planning Board to order. Before we get started, I will read the governor's order. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting in the Free Town Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public, indoor parties with a right indoor requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Free Town's website, free town R M A dot gov. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we were unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Free Town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Um, and so on another note, uh, hopefully everybody is aware that at the end of the month, I believe the governor's order is, we're getting as close to normal as we have been in an awful long time. So, uh, our June first meeting has already been advertised for Zoom. Uh, but after that, we will be going to in-person meetings. Um, town hall is going to be opened up. Uh, the, um, so we'll be going to in-person meetings and we'll be utilizing the, uh, the new meeting room at the, uh, the new police station. So, good news for everybody. Okay, uh, so first on our agenda, we have the discussion of a minor plan modification for Neon Innovation Way. Is that correct, Chris?
Yep.
Yeah, um, so where does that, do we have the applicant here?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Attorney Thomas Kilon on behalf of the applicant with me as well as Brandon Carr from the pre-engineering.
Oh, hello, gentlemen, how are you?
Doing well.
Good, good, good. So, uh, last we met, if I'm not mistaken, um, there were some, what we deemed minor modifications to the plan, uh, just to refresh everybody's memory, there was a reduction in overall footprint and size of the project. That's correct?
That it, that is correct. Um, there was some change to the, uh, to the drainage on the site. Uh, we were going to have above ground instead of below ground. Uh, the board did deem at its prior hearing that this was a minor modification, but didn't want, uh, E P G to review, uh, the revised drainage. Uh, we've submitted everything to E P G. Uh, they submitted a comment letter. Uh, Brendan Carr responded to that. I believe E P G has communicated with the planning board, letting them know that we satisfied, uh, all of their concerns.
Okay. Um, excuse me, uh, Adam, you're here, correct? Adam from Environmental Partners Group?
Yes, this is Adam.
Okay, uh, so I'm, I'm reading through it and, um, essentially you confirm what, uh, applicant's attorney has stated that your E P G is in agreement. They've provided the information?
Yes, yep. In the, the most recent round, they, they addressed our comments.
Yeah, and, uh, I'm, I'm speaking specifically of the May twelfth response letter that you, that, uh, well, the, the letter from, uh, the pre-engineering.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Um, so what's, so basically this is just for confirmation for the board that in fact your proposed changes will work to everybody's satisfaction. Now, we did vote already that it's a minor modification, doesn't require another public hearing. Counselor, is there anything in your opinion that is outstanding that remains to be done?
Uh, I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Brandon, you came all this way to join us on Zoom. Is there anything you want to say?
Uh, no, I just thanks, uh, Environmental Partners Group for a quick turnaround on, especially on the second review. So we appreciate that.
Okay, uh, thank you all very much, and I guess, uh, we'll see you on the next go around, however that may be.
All right, thanks.
Thank you all.
All right. Yeah, have a great night. Yep, bye-bye now. Okay. The next, uh, public hearing, number two, we, I will call back to order. This is a continuation of a public hearing for an application for a subdivision, definitive subdivision called, uh, Medesha Way. Um, so I've called that back to order. Uh, Chris, again, we're still waiting. This is in the courts, if I'm not mistaken, or there's, there's some sort of legal proceeding occurring now?
Yes, I believe it's still, uh, in front of the court.
Okay.
And I, Byron asked that, uh, we continue and specify a date, uh, so.
Okay, um, most of us are aware who've been on the board for a while, we try to do only one meeting in a month in the summertime because it's hard to coordinate with people's vacations and the like. Um, but I, I, in this instance, since we already have a public hearing and meeting scheduled for the first, we're going to do a second meeting in June. Again, this will be in person. So, the next meeting date in June would be the fifteenth, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Uh, so why don't we go ahead and continue it to a month out, uh, to the fifteenth to at six o'clock at the, what do they, what do they call in that room? Does it have a specific name, Free Town Police Station Conference Room? Bob, do you know the name of that?
Um, I believe it's the, yeah, I was on mute. I believe it's the, uh,
Oh, sorry.
It's the E O C. It's, uh, no, I should know it because I was on the committee, but, uh, community.
No, but I thought, I, I think the name has changed a couple of times too, from meeting room. I thought there was conference room and then it was a public. There you go, community room. That's the one I'm looking for, the word. It's community room now. Okay. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to six o'clock, June fifteenth, uh, Free Town, uh, Community Room on Memorial Drive.
Some of.
Okay. Motion remains supported. If there's no further discussion on the motion, uh, roll, roll call vote. Uh, Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye. Jim Frey's?
Aye.
Jim Frey's, aye. Is Chris Mello with us?
Uh, doesn't look like it.
All right, uh, Bob Joes?
Aye.
Bob Joes, aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. All right, motion passes. Uh, next thing on our agenda, I will call back to order a, uh, continued public hearing for a commercial, uh, development by Mitch Kev Real Estate LLC, proposed, uh, building on Brayley Road. Chris, you were in contact with the engineer today, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, uh, he asked, he said that basically they need to update the plan a little bit or review it a little bit and then send it out to E P G and ask to be continued to January first in order to, um, keep the pressure on, but not January first, sorry, June first.
Oh, I was going to say that, that's a long way out, my friend.
June fir-, January first sounds good to me.
January for, yeah, I mean, listen, and, and again, so that everybody understands, this is a public hearing that's been going on for a while. Uh, it's back and forth between peer review. There's been delays. I think the Corona has affected this. Uh, so we've been, uh, I, I believe, you know, patient, uh, on this, so, um, it seems like we've been dealing with this since last June, i- if not before that. Um, so I'm, I'm, how, how about this? As much as I have faith in what they told you, let's do it the fifteenth in person. All right, I'll entertain.
I'll make that motion, continue, uh, Mitch Kev to June fifteenth at the community room at the police station on Memorial Drive, six P M.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
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 Motion remains supported. If there's no further discussion, uh, roll call vote. Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye. Jim Frey's?
Aye.
Jim Frey's, aye. Bob Joes?
Aye.
Bob Joes, aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. Passing, unanimous. Item number four. This is for a continuation of a public hearing. Uh, I will call back to order the public hearing for C V E North America. This is for a solar project located at twelve Ford Road. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, we've closed the public hearing on this and, uh, the only outstanding item that we were waiting on before we were going to call the vote, if I'm remembering correctly, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, was that we were, uh, anticipating or awaiting a list of requested conditions uh, for us to consider. We have received that and that has been, uh, disseminated to the board via email. Uh, Chris, is this on our website?
Uh, yes, it's, should be the first thing if you go under May eighteenth, twenty twenty, uh, meeting materials, suggested conditions of approval.
So those are the interested parties and board members, if you go to the town of Free Town website, free town R M A dot gov, if you, uh, click on boards and committees, scroll down to the planning board, you pull that up, you'll see on the right-hand side a box, it says, uh, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, meeting materials. If you click on that, all of the information, correspondence, narratives and plans and applications are on there for the items that we are speaking about tonight. Uh, so, um, if anybody needs to refer to that, uh, for this conversation, go right ahead. Um, I'm assuming the applicant is here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Ryan Young with C V E and, uh, I'm joined tonight by, um, Betsy Mason of Clavens Law Group as well as Nick Cleaney and Chris King of Atlantic Engineering.
All right then. Well, welcome back.
Thanks for having us.
Uh, yeah, sure. Uh, um, so you want to go over, uh, your proposed conditions? You went through the time and that, and effort to do them, so you might as well.
Yeah, sure. Chris, are you here? Do you want to do an intro?
Yes, uh, good evening. This is, uh, Christopher King with Atlantic Design. Um, as succinctly put by, uh, the chair, um, we had submitted, uh, at the last hearing, uh, based on E P G's latest, uh, review letter, um, there were really two items that, uh, seemed like they were not outstanding, but two items or aspects of the project that I'm talking with the board had made sense to develop some specific conditions so that those items were, you know, there was a mechanism in place to adequately, um, make sure that they're addressed, you know, the before, during and after construction. Um, and so the conditions, uh, were specific to basically, um, ensuring a safe, um, safe situation, um, with mitigation and protocol during construction for the entrance during construction activities. Um, and then the second is, um, related to screening and, uh, just, uh, again, another mechanism that would um, allow for the project or the town, if you will, um, to, um, again, have a, a level of protection or a level of review um, in regards to the proposed screening and offers, you know, um, a remedy moving forward, um, in the event that, um, you know, additional screening, um, is required. Um, and so we've submitted those, uh, we feel like they offer or provide the board with, you know, again, um, different mechanisms to make sure that, you know, first and foremost, uh, you know, we're creating a safe condition out at the entrance during construction activities, particularly deliveries. Um, it requires a coordination even before construction starts, um, in the form of a pre-construction kind of coordination meeting, at which point, you know, scheduling, project scheduling and logistics will be, um, more better, you know, better defined uh, with actual project schedules and then that information will be disseminated to the town and so that entities such as the police department, uh, could work with the contractor, um, to make sure that we're providing exactly what they're looking for and when they're looking for it. Um, you know, I mean, you have the, the information in front of you, so, um, you know, sort of belaboring and, and, um, going through each item point by point. We figured we would, uh, see if the board had any, um, questions regarding the suggested conditions um, and kind of open that as a, I guess, as a discussion topic, if you will.
No, I will, I will say, in fairness, uh, you did, uh, do what we asked you to do, uh, so we do appreciate that. Uh, and it does, uh, speak to the issues that we were, at least that, uh, I know that we talked about that were our concerns. So I, I do appreciate that. Uh, I just had one, just a, a question. It's, it's semantics maybe, I guess, at the end of the day. Third paragraph down, it says, within one year following installation, the effectiveness of the screen planting shall be evaluated. Is it intended to say within one year or should it be after one year? And I'm, Ms. Mason may be able to answer that better.
Um, so, you know, we had, you know, I mean, I guess it could be really written, however, you know, the, the board, uh, feels most comfortable.
Sure.
You know, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if we have a preference as far as one versus the other. I think the idea is within the one year was, you know, while the project is still, I guess, quote unquote, under construction and, you know, for lack of a better term, mobilize, um, the screening, you know, would be evaluated within that time period. So if.
I guess, Chris, maybe, maybe, let me just give you my perspective. What I'm saying is, I'm, I, and I think at the end of the day, I might be actually trying to look out more for your interest and the applicant's interest. You wouldn't want to have an overzealous board, let's just, again, not knowing, you know, whether this is going to get a permit, when it's going to start, you know, when this year would be. My point is, you don't want to get, get some sort of overzealous board that after three months of construction, they go in, they start demanding that they're going to start taking the bond. You need to have a certain timeframe. So what I'm saying is, maybe after ten months, but before twelve mon-, you know, something that gives an idea, you know, that the plantings are done and, you know, you've gone through potentially a growing season within that time. You've had an opportunity to go out and replace ones that have might have died. You might, you know what I'm saying? I think rather than us going out there after a couple of months because it says within one year. So, you know, maybe, maybe after six months, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I, maybe I'm reading way too much into it. Uh, we all know what the intent is, right? Get out there about after a year, make sure that the trees and, and, and the, and the prescribed plantings are done and they've taken and they're effective. If not, work with the applicant. If the applicant's unwilling to work with the town, then we would have the ability to, to call the bond and then institute the changes ourselves. Like, that's, that's the point of this. That's the gist of this, right?
Correct.
All right. So, um, all right, well, I'm going to stop talking now and I'm going to open up to any other board members if they have any questions, comments, concerns. Um, and if not, uh, then I will entertain any motions that, uh, the board may want to make. So, I'm going to assume, I don't have, I don't have the luxury of having a screen because I'm popping between two, uh, two screens myself, uh, to see everybody. Um, I'm, I'm taking it by the lack of comment that the, the rest of the board members, uh, are, are fine with the proposed conditions.
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, so my, my biggest concerns of, of the project are pretty much twofold. It's public safety, obviously. That's what we've been addressing for a while here and, you know, nuisance to the, to the neighbors, whether it's visual or audio. We went through the audio with the sound study and those things and, um, light is, doesn't seem to be a problem. They're not going to put any lights on, so lights at night isn't, isn't an issue. It's more visual screening and, and noise, obviously, and all for the, for the neighbors and, and public safety. Um, and to the, the, the biggest concern of public safety is the traffic going by as vehicles are entering and exiting the site. Um, construction vehicles making drops for the, um, panels, the racking, all those type of things and making sure that nothing backs up on the street because it's a narrow, tight street with a sharp corner and really on, pretty much on the apex of the corner is the entrance to the site. Um, so those are my biggest concerns. Um, everything else on the site, it, it is what it is. I still have concerns that it's not properly before us because it's a second principal use on one site, but that's not this board to determine. That's for somebody else to determine. So we can only act on what's before us.
Um, that is true.
Uh, that being said, I, I think maybe we should set some kind of parameters, um, for construction hours, um, parameters for delivery times to minimize impact. You know, I'm thinking about school buses. School buses travel that route between six A M and nine A M every morning and school, high school lets out around, what, quarter past, quarter to two. So between then and three o'clock, the school, that, that's heavily traveled by school buses because all the different grades travel that road coming into town. So, um, those are the concerns I have. Um, so maybe the board wants to consider, you know, curtailing those. As far as screenings in the past, we've done Burmings, we've done Evergreen plantings. I don't want to give up the board's control by just putting it all on a building permit and making the building inspector decide whether it satisfies to give the permit or not, um, because I didn't see anything in that review letter where it came actually before, back before the board to review it. It just said, pending building permit, that it would, they would do those things. Um, so those are the, those are the questions I had. And if we did, uh, if we did want to go the route where, with what they said and wait till they submit plans for it in the future and whether those, would that be more of a tentative approval for tonight? Depending on what those plans come in, because they, those plans come in, something that the board doesn't agree with and we already given the approval, would we not be able to change that now or revoke the approval? It'd be a lot harder process, probably revoke a re- approval because they'd have it in hand. It really seems like it puts it on the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer at that, at that point. If it's out of our hands and it's up to him to enforce, whether he gets a building permit or not.
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate for us to address some comments?
Sure, absolutely. Just for the record, this is, uh, Ryan, right?
Yep, yep. This is Ryan Young with, you know, North America. In terms of, um, yeah, and I think we've, we've been through the, the comments about the safety and, um, the concerns about access and, and we get that. We think we really try to accommodate. And we're, I'm seeing if I can pull it here, but it's all on the, it's all on the, um, the, the site plans. We provided, you know, a layout, so there's definitely a turnaround space. There's a landing zone, a, a layout for, for large trucks and, you know, we've committed to nobody backing out. That's why we made the, the new layout zone that was in the last plan submitted. Additionally, we've, um, really narrowed the times both for construction and deliveries, um, based on both the police chiefs and the planning board's, uh, comments. So we think that's all in and we've been pretty accommodating. We've dialed it down to, um, specific hours. So, um, you know, I hear what you're saying about a conditional improvement, approval, um, really a conditional approval. I mean, besides the, the, a conditional approval is what it is and that what your, the conditions within the special permit, the site plan review are the conditions. So that's what, that's what we're trying to get to.
Well, I, I, we, we trip over this all the time and I understand what Bob is saying and, and
Yep.
Um, I, I'm, I, I've read the, you know, the proposed, uh, conditions and it does give the planning board and other boards, quite honestly, relevant boards, uh, a seat at the table, you know, relative to construction entrance safety, you know, specifically. There's a requirement that you meet with police, fire, planning, border health, conservation, public works. I would add, you know, schools, school busing in that, you know, I don't want to rely on, uh, recollection or the police, you know, so, uh, I think that could be tweaked there. But we often trip over conditional approval and conditions of approval, right? So a conditional approval means there are outstanding items and it doesn't get approved, your, your approval doesn't take effect or isn't in effect until all those conditions are met. The, uh, approval conditions are just that. They're conditions that must be met because that's what was approved. And I get Bob's further point that it's difficult to oversee with the single zoning enforcement official, all these things. Uh, uh, but I, I do, Bob, to a certain degree, uh, agree with the applicant that some of those issues are addressed in their, uh, their proposed conditions. Like I said, I think we can tweak it. Um, you know, what happens, Bob, and I'm just, we're just going to have a conversation here. What happens if we set hours of operation and, you know, the bus company is on a different schedule or it doesn't ju- they, they're still going to have to go through the rigors of, of the police, fire and, and other things. And so if we set that as a condition now and they have to go outside of that because of, because other, other interests have a, a, a a definitive reason for that, they might be outside of, of the approval if, if that's the case. So again, I know it's, we're, we're really starting to get into the nitty gritty of what we do and how we do it, but, um.
No, and I understand that, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, I always, and, and I understand that they've come a long way and changed a lot of things to, to help alleviate some of the concerns that we have with the site. Um, it's more in conditions of like hours of construction from seven A M to five P M, I think would be, and there's no reason to stop hours of construction in the middle of the project for any other reason. I mean, that, that has nothing to do with traffic, all that stuff. So for them to build as much as they, they can, as long as they can, that, that's great on site. Um, my concerns are, again, of the road. That, that's my biggest concern. Um, it, it's, yes, they could go to the police chief and whatever he decides that's good enough for us. We've not done that necessarily in the past and in the past, we have set conditions of what side of the road they can park on, um, hours they can be there. I, I'm, I'm, Washburn, Burn Road, for example, we set all kinds of conditions on what time they make deliveries. Um, that, we just didn't rely to the police chief to make those decisions. He, he's a busy man. I, I'm sure he had time to meet with these people. That'd be great. Um, but we, we ourselves set those positions, which I, I think is in within our power. Um, we can delegate that power to any authority we'd like.
Bob, it, 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 it absolutely is. I'm not, I'm not arguing with that. I'm just trying to have a fair and open, you know, process, you know. Not everybody at home has read, has read what, what, what we've read. So I'm just trying to, you know, we have, in fairness, again, we have received a, a letter uh, from the chief. It was a direct comment to the applicant, uh, uh, and it was in response to what we call our Form L, where we send out the plans to multiple departments and they comment on it. And I think within that, it was prescribed what, you know, typical hours of construction and operation would be. And also within that letter, there was concerns about limiting, you know, deliveries to your point, you know, on Algonquin, we had deliveries that were showing up in the middle of the night, right? So, uh, we ended up hiring the police detail to make sure that they turn them around if they ended up showing up. So I, I get it. They're legitimate concerns. Um, you know, at the end of the day.
I think, yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure that you're, you're.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. If I, if I could, if I could, Ryan, just, I'm going to, I'm going to let Bob make his statement and then I'll go to you, okay?
Yep. Would, would the applicant be concerned if we curtailed delivery hours between a certain period of time so that way we're not getting off-hour deliveries? And something that's, might be a little constrictive, but definitely a, a large enough window that I think they could logistically plan for.
Sure, k- if you're asking me, can we do it?
I'm asking, I'm asking.
Are the applicant?
I'm asking through you to the applicant.
Sure. Uh, so, so the question, Ryan, and, and if you would like to make your statement or, or whatever first, that's fine. Uh, the question is, would you be amenable to us setting, uh, definitive hours of delivery with the understanding that should further conversation with police, fire, bus company, other that they may in fact be further restricted?
Yes, that's fine. I think, I, I just want us to remember, I mean, part of the issue here is we've been going at this for so long. I think we forgot where we were in the beginning and so C V E has agreed to the conditions that you've asked for and the conditions that you asked for and it's on the plan. You, if you see the plan, I think it's page eight and it's note ten. What you asked for and what we agreed to was, um, deliveries between the hours of nine fifteen and one fifteen or after one fifteen. I presume that was to accommodate the, it's sheet seven on the plans, by the way, excuse me for
Right.
the rung. Or after four fifteen. So if you'd like to, you know, we can further limit that on the plan easily enough to, you know, include only daylight hours, but I think that's also set by the construction parameters that are in it.
Nope, that, that, that fine, it's fine with the five o'clock, obviously. At some point, there's got to be an end, end to it, but no, that's.
That, I, I think that's Bob, what, what I was thinking and you and I were thinking too. Yep.
This, so we have to actually vote for these conditions, even though they're on the plan. We asked for those, but we have to actually list them and vote for them. And I want to make sure everybody realizes what we're actually, we're specifically speaking about. Um, so that, that's, that's exactly what I was, I was alluding to, but I just hadn't gotten fully there yet. Um, so that, that's, that's exactly what I, I was, I was alluding to, but I just hadn't gotten fully there yet. Um, hours of construction, we spoke about. Um, you're fine with the hours of construction? Nothing's changed on that?
Correct.
And then back to, to police officers, do we wanna, do we wanna set a number for police officers? Do you want specifically just wait for the chief to say what he wants?
Well, I, I think I'll be honest with you. If, if you look at their proposed condition. They not only have to satisfy the police chief, but multiple departments, including us. And I think we would have a seat at the table and we could do it like we've done before, uh, require it done at an open meeting. Uh, with all their subcontractors, so that everybody is on the same page. And, and those folks at C V E, that's typically what we've done is, is we require a pre-construction. And we've done it at an open meeting. So it requires a little bit more effort by the subs to show up there and, and pay a little bit more attention. So that everybody's critically aware of, of uh, you know, the, the, the conditions that are uh, that are. That are put on some of these projects. So.
Okay, cause I, when I read it, I'm reading construction and safeties conditions. I've read the thing, read it. Everybody's there. But it doesn't have anything to vote if, if it's not satisfactory, that this, the process stops and this, it, it stops there. It, it, it just basically reads as it's gonna be a meeting. Everybody will talk at the meeting for the most part and they'll try to address the uh, concerns.
You want specific wording in there that says that it's a satisfactory plan? Uh, or, uh, you know, all, all interested parties must be satisfied with the proposed plan?
On, on the other hand, I'm, I'm not sure we can, if there's all those parties in there, I'm not sure we can um, uh. Please absolutely everybody in the room. Uh, I think the, the key sentence is the last sentence. And it says, the applicant shall coordinate with the police department to provide any such traffic details as requested. So, I mean, to me, the, the, the real hook and, and real, you know, overseer of the safety of the, of the project. And of course for the town is the police department. So that's what we're kinda relying on there.
Well, I, I, again, I, I think in fairness, this isn't, this wouldn't be the first time that we've done that. Oftentimes it's, it's before the application and then a, a lot of times it's after this, this consultation. I think we in Freetown have a good enough working. Uh, uh, relationship with the other boards and, and department heads. That I think there's a, there'd be some sort of respect given. So if the planning board was a little bit. Uh, would like something else done at that time, I would hope that the police chief would also include that in his re- his requirements or requests. Hey, at, at, at the end of, at, at the end of the day, this is, this is where we're at, right? So I have no problem if somebody wants to make motions on some of these things, you know, that's the only way we move these forward. We can continue to talk about what we should and shouldn't do, but uh, at the end of the day, I think all parties are looking for some sort of closure on this project. So, um, if it's, if it's, if it's a point where. You just have to put that the, that the traffic and that the shall coordinate with the Freetown Police Department and the planning board. To eliminate all those other part. But again, the, the, the police department, I, I think it's equally important is to have the bus company involved too, right? Uh, uh, I, I just think.
Well, when, if they're not, if they have deliveries during those hours, then really it's outside bus department when they're gonna be.
Yeah.
They've, they've agreed to be between one and uh, nine fifteen and one fifteen and after four fifteen. So those are the only time the buses run anyhow. So I think the bus is satisfied. I, I'm satisfied, at least I'm satisfied with, with that.
Yeah, then, 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 then that's fine. Yep. Yep. So we just, again, the, the, the planning board at this point in time has to, has to either make a motion to include certain wording on that condition. Or accept that condition um, the way it is or not accept the condition at all. But um, I just think we're at that point in time. We need to either, you know, move on, make some motions and, and, and. I'm not saying we don't go through all these things. What I'm saying is we can nitpick everyone to death. Somebody has to. To decide, do we add that wording or not? And if not, then we move on to the next.
I've given my two cents. I'm just, if anybody else from the board wants to talk, if I have any issues or concerns.
Thanks, Bob. Hey, I, just for everybody involved, I just received a, a text from Chris Mello. I, I, he ended up getting stuck late at work, I think. He's gonna try and log in now, so.
Oh, yeah, I just logged in.
There you are, Chris. All right, Chris. Thanks for being here. I know you work. No, no, I know you got stuck on the job. Don't worry about it, kid. So uh, just to give you a heads up where we're at, uh, we're discussing the solar application for twelve Forge Road. They provided us, we asked them at the last meeting, we've closed the public here in last meeting, we've asked them to uh, provide us with a, a list of their proposed conditions. They're on the website. They were also sent to you, so I don't know if you're, where you're at. Um, and more specifically, okay, and, and more specifically, we're just discussing at this point in time. Uh, if there are any other conditions or wording changes to the conditions that we would like to add to this. So. That brings you kinda up to speed. Um, so Bob, Bob has given his two cents on, 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 uh, on this. As he put it, to, to quote him, um, uh, is there any other comments uh, from the other board members? Um, on how, how you feel about uh, any of these issues?
Kevin, I think the traffic, as long as the traffic issue is, is taken care of and it's acceptable. No matter, you know, how they, how they word it, I'm, I'm fine with it. I think that's my only issue there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd have to agree, agree with that. As long as the traffic is uh, noted for.
All right. Thank you very much. And, and again, we're, we're to, to go. Uh, 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 is the planning board by consensus? If nobody wants to make a motion by consensus, are we good with, with? Leaving the traffic and the traffic and police details solely to the police chief? Or would you like to have it at the seated table? Cause I, I think that right now, that's the crux of it. And, and so if, if we're good with the police chief making the decisions uh, solely. Then that's fine. If not, somebody make a motion to add wording to include us. If not, we're gonna move on.
I'm, I'll make a motion that a representative of the planning board attends the meeting with the police chief and the um, applicant.
I need a second?
Second.
Most men supported? The first session on the motion? Hearing none. Again, to repeat the motion that a, a representative from the planning board be uh, work in concert with the police chief. To determine an adequate uh, traffic uh, detail and police presence. Uh, so the motions were made and supported. If there's no further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. So Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye. Jim Freitz?
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye. Chris Mello?
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye. Bob Joe's?
Aye.
Bob Joe's, aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. Okay, are there any other conditions specifically that you would like to talk about? Anybody on the board? Um, and just a, just again, a reminder, right? And, and Bob kinda made a point of this earlier. If, if we don't get to talk about a specific condition, uh, you know, if it's on the plans. When we approve those plans, those conditions are what need to be met. I think everybody understands that, but I just need to be. Because those, it's a very extensive plan set and there's many notes and there's conditions that are placed on there relative to specific aspects of construction. And, 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 and things. Um, so just everybody understands uh, that should we, uh, when we vote on this. That um, whatever condition has been stated on the plan, whatever situation's on the plan is what is going to be. Uh, recorded as a condition for the approval. Um, so any, um, any other conversation that, that uh, or anything else that people wanna bring up? If not, um, I will need a motion on the entire project.
Um, uh, do you want us to list conditions separately besides the two that propose? Any other conditions you wanna list separately? And I'm specifically speaking to um, noise. I know that they did the plan, plan come up to six point eight decibels at above ambient at the property line. Um, is that on the plan somewhere? And if so, we can approve it with the plan, just so it's not over that down, down the road? Or is that something we need to do separately?
I'm just trying to remember, again, understanding this is going on well. I'm trying to remember if we actually voted to accept that as the condition. Already.
I don't believe we do. We do have the report. I'm, I'm looking at the report, um, but I don't remember setting that as a condition. I thought that was gonna wait till.
So, so that, so that's fine. If you wanna make a motion to make that report and all the uh, con- the, all the uh, conditions within that report as being a condition of. Of approval, that, that's fine.
I will make that motion specifically no higher than six point eight decibels. Increase over ambient at the property line.
Mister Chairman.
Yes? Yeah?
I'm, I'm not sure of those numbers. I'd have to look back. I, is, I'm not sure we, we set. I mean, you're, you're requiring something that's.
Hold on, hold on. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and pull it up.
It's only for operation, not for construction. This was your operation numbers on your, I believe this is. May third, two tw- twenty twenty one.
Okay, twelve Ford, noise impacts, letter revision. What's the most recent one here? Noise peer review, noise revised impacts assurance letter? That's February twelve. Which letter are you talking about, Bob?
I, I believe it's the May, I go back up to May third, twenty twenty one. Starts off with um. It starts off with um. Sound of tenywa- antenouations. It goes into some modeling, I believe, and what's they expect. Uh, noise impact assessment as of March twelve. And based on the applicant's calculations, the future sound levels of the property could, line could increase by two point five and six point eight decibels. Uh, depending on current ambient levels, uh, change of three decibels is considered perceptible. An increase of test, ten decibels is often perceived as doubling of sound levels. The board shall be advised, in addition to sound review or analysis is required. And that's page four of six. And that's where I came up with the number. Was what the number they provided should be between, increase between two and six point eight decibels.
I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm trying to find it on the website here. Everything I have is dated February twelfth. Don't have anything in May. Are you looking on, on the website, Bob? Are you looking at it just?
No, I'm looking at the email that was sent, uh, sent out. It has all the different attachments to it.
When was that email sent out, Bob?
Email was sent out on. May fourth. It's look, third peer review. The emails, the, the third peer, peer review from twelve Ford attached. And it, then it links the peer review to it with landscaping, all those things. And then sound level calculations. The applicant supplied an updated sound level calculations. Adam wrote that based on the applicant's calculations, the future sound level at the property line could increase between two point five and si-. Two point five decibels and six point eight decibels. So I was going on the high side.
I got you. I see it now. So Chris summarized it and then it's, and, and then attached the, eh, the letter at the bottom.
Correct. If you looked on page four of the letter.
I got it, yeah. Yeah.
I believe it's paragraph three, section three. And it's the third paragraph, fourth paragraph in that section is specific, uh, third paragraph in that section specifically speaks to it.
So it's on page four? Is that what you said, Bob? I'm just, oh, yeah, there it is. Top of. Yeah, yeah. So, yep, I got it. Based on the applicant's calculate, the future sound levels of the property line could increase between two and a half. And six point eight decibels depending on current ambient levels. Okay. And this is from environmental policy. So, uh, you're saying you're not comfortable with the six point eight?
It's okay with the board. I, I can, um, I've got some draft language here. It's very uh, simple and to the point. Um, that other towns have used and we've agreed to, that I can read. I mean, the issue with using that number is we were asked to provide a number that the, the system would possibly reach. And that's what we've done with the engineering report. I don't think we were asked to prove a cap. Uh, which is a whole different calculation and scenario that we would need to address. So uh, I'll just read briefly um, some language that um, a neighboring town's legal counsel has come up with. And see if it works for you all. Basically says this, the solar array is in a quiet residential neighborhood. The applicant has stated the noise levels from the transformers and the battery system shall be reduced. Um, et cetera, if at any time during operation of the system, noise levels from the solar array or accessory equipment. Violate the mass D E P air quality policies and guidance provision sale be made by the applicant to pers- to suppress that sound. The applicant responsible for reasonable costs associated with the monitoring of the sound requested by the planning board. So uh, that provides the town with a lot of protection, um, not only at construction. But after, a- and it also provides reasonable guidance. The mass D E P air quality policies and guidance, which could change, by the way, a- and, and become more strict. But it doesn't nail it down to uh, a definition um, that we provided based on what the sound could be.
Right. I think we had talked about that, Bob, at a meeting too, right? That they have to meet the D E P standards for sound, which I thought we talked, it was what, ten decibels over ambient noise at the property line? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's L ninety, it's the, the ten decibels over the property line. That's standard D E P. Um, yes.
Are you, are you comfortable with using the standard D E P sound um, uh, parameters?
As long as the letter states it's gonna be at the owner's expense. Cause it, sound studies are expensive. And that's a problem we've had in town before is to prove it, the, to prove that the sound. If it's town has to take the steps to prove that the sound is over. It was, uh, our last quote was eleven thousand dollars for a sound study for the town to do a um, a proper L ninety study.
All right, well.
I believe his letter, he said it was at, at the applicant's expense. Wasn't that something you read at the end there?
Yes, that's correct.
I thought so. So yes, that satisfies me. If the board wants to go to the full ten, that satisfies me.
Okay. Um, again, the condition as proposed is that uh, just to, to take all the uh, extra fluff. Is that throughout the uh, the operation of the facility, it must maintain uh, the D E P sound standards. And if not, and then they're not in compliance or thought to be a non-compliant, a sound study, it needs to be. Uh, uh, done in accordance with the D E P uh, practice and policy at the owner's expense. Right?
I'm making a motion that we accept that as a, as a condition.
Okay.
And he submits a copy to other to the town who are to Nils.
All right. Yep. It'll obviously have to be written and Nils can obviously write that on, uh, when we, when we do the actual condition paper. Or when, whenever the paperwork is done, should they be, uh, you know, when, when we get there. So. Um, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to look at other pa- uh, other information too. So um, are there any other specific things that people would like to uh, talk about? All right, I think we hit on those two very important items. Um, the only thing outstanding right now is, uh, is again, a, a motion on the entire project and then a vote. So I will, uh, I will entertain whatever motion the board has. We, we, we need, we, we need a, we need a motion somewhere, folks. So it's either, it's either a motion to accept the, the most updated plans. And approve it with the conditions, or it's to in, change the conditions, or it's to not, not approve it. There's basically the choices, folks. When they say silence is golden, but. um, at the end of the day, I need somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve conditions.
I was waiting for that. I'll second that, Bob.
Motion's been made and supported to approve, and, uh, the most recent plan set with the aforementioned conditions, both submitted in writing and, uh, those that were orated at the, the, uh, at this meeting. Motion been supported. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye. Jim Frey.
Aye.
Jim Frey, aye. Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye. Bob Jones.
Aye.
Kevin Damaris. Nay. So, motion passes, una- uh, not unanimous, excuse me, you had four in favor of, uh, I will, so congratulations, uh, applicants. Um, you, uh, obviously, we've got paperwork to do now, uh, and we will all have to sign off on the conditions once they've been reviewed and once the office has got them. Um, written up. We, as a, as a courtesy, we will uh, provide you with a copy of that prior to us signing it, in case there is any, um, any obvious errors that we, we've made. We're not doing that so that you could change any of the conditions that have already been voted on and or approved. We're only doing that so that if we make a technical error, uh, i- in that, then you would be able to comment at that point in time. It does not, not mean that we will change it. It just means I'm affording you or we're affording you that, that, that courtesy. Um, uh, and I will also just afford you the courtesy of, uh, I think I told you from the very beginning, and, um, I know just from co- the conversations that we've had here at the meetings, um, this is a difficult project, and there's a reluctance, and I've told you again from the beginning, and I think other members, um, stated the same, that there, there's a true inherent concern for safety over there. And additionally, to echo Bob's point, and I'm just doing this to let you know why I voted against it. Um, that, um, this was never the intent of the bylaw. It's not, I know it, and Bob said it, and he's a better man than me for holding his nose and, and voting the, the way he did. So, um, but, um, I just, it, it was just something, this was never the intent. It was never intent to put a commercial s- grade, and it's commercial scale solar, uh, on a lot that already had a house, uh, on it. Um, and so that's an interior, uh, conversation that we're having here within the, the town departments, and we're going to look into, to rectify that. Um, but kudos to you, folks. You've convinced enough board members that, uh, that it's a viable project, and so I'll congratulate you on that. All right, if there's nothing else from, uh, any other board members, we'll move on to the next item. Is there, um, anything else from the applicant that they'd like to say before we move on? Okay, silence is golden. All right. Excuse me. Um, moving on to the next item on our agenda, down a free town planning board. We'll conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May eighteenth, to act on an application for, uh, a called Gurney Mola, M O A R, Mula. I'm sorry, M O L A.
Uh, Kevin.
Solar. Yes.
You skipped over the Middleborough Road public hearing. I believe for number five.
Oh. I'm sorry, you're right, I did. I apologize. So before we call that next one, the order will do number five. Um, the applicant is still here. That makes a heck of a lot more sense. I'll call back to order the continuation of a public hearing, uh, for a consideration of a site plan review for a solar project to be located at, um, what's known as thirty-two so, um, uh, Middleborough Road. Uh, applicants represented by C V E North America, uh, to get everybody again up to speed and bring them, uh, this is in peer review. If I'm not mistaken, the applicant has made some changes and has, uh, provided answers or responses, if you will, to the latest E P G peer review. Um, so I, I believe that's where we stand. Additionally, uh, I have scheduled, um, and I just got confirmation on it, uh, a onsite walk with the proponents, uh, engineers or whoever they're going to send out there. For tomorrow, I think it'd be there about three thirty in the afternoon. If anybody on the planning board would be interested to go over there, uh, to take a look at the site. Um, you're more than welcome to. Uh, so that being said, uh, I'm gonna assume that we have the same folks. Uh, I'm gonna assume Ryan and Chris.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, if I may, um, again, my name is Christopher King with Atlantic Design Engineers. Um, the, uh, just a quick recap is that, um, the last public hearing, uh, was basically an introduction to the project. Uh, we've, um, and receipt of comments made by not only the board, but also, um, uh, the, uh, two of the abutters in specific. Um, since that point in time, we, um, met, uh, onsite with the abutters, um, to hear their concerns, um, uh, directly from, um, from, uh, what, uh, the abutters themselves. Um, as noted, uh, the project is currently under peer review. Um, the intent, uh, just so we're all on the same page, and hopefully to try to expedite things as much as possible. Uh, as, as you noted tomorrow, there is a site walk, um, at which point in time, the applicant will be bringing a check, uh, to cover the balance or, uh, the estimate, uh, that E P G has provided, uh, to close out hopefully the review. Um.
Okay.
Uh, so, you know, hopefully, you know, that forthcoming, um, um, you know, again, not to belabor the E P G review letter, but a lot of, a lot of the comments were, uh, specific to issues that were also identified in the first round of the Forge Road project, and so we provided, you know, where applicable, of course, uh, basically the, the same set of information, um, consistent with the intent, um, and the parameters for the Forge Road. We've applied those to the Middleborough Road, um, project, and so uh, not to be too presumptuous, but we're anticipating a, you know, a favorable response, um, from E P G, um, just based on our experience with the Ford Road project. Um, a lot of it is the technical information or the additional detailed information, um, that would be, um, added to the operation and maintenance plan, uh, the draft SWIP report, um, which speak to, um, you know, such things as the mowing reg- regiment and, um, the treatment of the meadow mix and some of the interim, um, measures um, being used to ensure that, uh, the project has a chance to properly establish while still protecting everything down gradient from a stormwater standpoint. Uh, there's really no substantive design changes, if you will. Uh, the project, uh, basically remained uh, the same that was, uh, that was submitted initially, um, with exception to two areas which were, uh, the plans were revised in this most recent, um, version to, uh, try to address the comments or concerns that were raised by the abutters um, uh, at the last public hearing end, which, um, you know, came about during the actual site walk. Um, so one of the, um, one of the concerns, if you will, um, uh, was, um, in regards to, um, Ms. Hopkins', um, site at Fort Claremont. Um, and if, uh, the board recalls, uh, Ms. Hopkins had indicated that due to, and this is non-solar project related, but due to another abutter in some of the land clearing activities, um, currently, there's an area, a low area that has been created, which, um, causes, um, periodic, uh, I guess flooding, for lack of a better description, um, flooding conditions at her driveway. Um, and so, um, you know, again, C V E trying to put their best foot forward and trying to be a good corporate neighbor, if you will, um, has agreed to install a, um, uh, basically a new, uh, length of covert, um, that would effectively, uh, drain that low area. Um, and the idea, as long as, um, you know, ongoing activities don't alter, significantly alter the drainage characteristics of the runoff patterns, the idea is that this would, uh, hopefully provide a, a long-term solution to that flooding that Ms. Hopkins is experiencing. Um, so that was added to the plan, um, and so we feel that, you know, that addressed, um, you know, that concern, um, which we felt was the, you know, the primary, primary concern coming, um, um, from Ms. Hopkins. Um, uh, the second abutter, um, uh, was Mr. Ashley, um, and, I don't know, you know, he was concerned about stormwater, uh, leaving our property um, and, um, exiting onto his property. Um, so, you know, again, not to get too technical into it, um, but the s- the current stormwater design is, you know, I guess, you know, first and foremost, it's designed in accordance with the current, uh, regulations and requirements that are set forth through mass D E P stormwater policy, as well as any kind of, uh, design criteria and requirements, uh, set forth within your local, uh, stormwater bylaw. Um, and, uh, you know, the, the, the buzz terms or the key terms that you always hear is the, the peak rate of runoff. Um, and, you know, as required, our post-development peak rate of runoff is equal to or less than the pre-development. Um, so as far as, you know, adding water or, uh, you know, increasing the flow onto Mr. Ashley's property, um, we've provided the calculations to demonstrate that is not the case. Um, we looked at the previous project that was, um, reviewed by the planning board years ago, um, which basically had a, so, stormwater basin in and around, uh, roughly the same area, um, that we're currently proposing, um, ours along the northern edge of the project. Um, and, you know, instead of just having a basin with a, uh, one single outlet pipe, um, again, for lack of a better term, uh, you know, creating a point source discharge, if you will. Um, we've, uh, designed our basin so that it discharges to a level spreader, uh, with the idea is that it basically tries to evenly distribute that, you know, pipe flow, if you will, into a, um, a long, broad, uh, kind of surface overflow runoff, uh, which reduces velocities, um, better spreads out the flow, uh, so you're certainly, um, you know, mitigating against any kind of scour or erosion onto the adjacent property. Um, the, in this latest set of revisions, that level spreader has been adjusted and a burn, an earthen berm added so that it, um, will not, um, impact, uh, the existing, uh, walking trail or walking paths um, up in that area of the, of the project. Um, and so, you know, again, and most of the, most of the changes were, um, you know, technical in nature, um, and we're, we're awaiting E P G's hopefully final review, uh, to confirm that we've adequately addressed the, um, technical deficiencies, if you will, and I'll use that term very loosely, 'cause I don't think we're, you know, deficient as opposed to offering additional information or clarification on, uh, certain aspects. Um, and again, really, the, the substantive plan changes, um, were really implemented to specifically address the concerns raised by the abutters, which we feel that, um, uh, we've provided the, not only the plan changes, but the calculations to, um, demonstrate we're, uh, not only in compliance, but again, trying to do what we can based on the project parameters, not only from a physical, uh, area constraint, but also, you know, you know, every project has to make uh, cents, dollars and cents. Um, and so from the economic, um, uh, parameters as well, um, you know, C V E is tasked Atlantic with, uh, you know, doing what we can to alleviate the concerns raised by the abutters, so we feel like, um, we have done that. Um, so we'd like to use this evening's, um, forum to hopefully, uh, get any additional input from the board. Um, I don't think, to my knowledge, there were any, um, outstanding issues. I know that this is a very different project from the Forge Road project. Um, but we'd also like, um, the opportunity to, uh, not to be presumptuous, but to tentatively, um, discuss any conditions of approval that the board would be looking for, for this project, uh, with the idea that, um, you know, we're obviously gonna be requesting the continuance, uh, to the next available hearing, um, but we would like to have everything, uh, hopefully finalized prior to the next planning board hearing, uh, meaning, you know, conditions finalized, and hopefully the board will be in a position to not only close the public hearing, but also, uh, render a decision on the project, uh, with, uh, you know, conditions in hand or at least discussed and, you know, pretty close to being finalized. Uh, so, uh, that's further ado. I mean, that's basically our, our position, our, um, thoughts on the use of, uh, tonight's time, so like to open it up to the board if we can answer any questions you may have. Um, and again, try to do what we can to, um, you know, look and put the board in a position to, um, render a decision at the next hearing.
I'm not gonna disagree that this is, um, a bit of a different project, right, just given its location and, and all, and just, um, I would assume that the sound and the sightline conditions and the condition for traffic control would be the same. You know, I'm gonna assume that, uh, anybody who's been over to Claremont can appreciate the fact that, you know, it's narrow. I do, uh, I do see the way you've made a concerted effort to widen the, uh, the traveled way within the layout, uh, to address some of the drainage concerns over there. So again, thank you. Uh, obviously, we were, we're onsite. Obviously, tomorrow, we'll be able to look at and see what we're talking about. Um, there is one thing that, it's a comment that I had received from the, uh, fire department, uh, and I think that the planning board would be remiss if we don't, uh, start requiring this. You know, oftentimes, we ask for a comment and it get, with the comment we get back, it must meet, uh, whatever the national fire safety standard is. What's happening with the solar is that the technology changes so much. Uh, you get these battery boxes, if you will, that are so jam-packed with batteries, uh, that there's an argument over whether some of these are actually confined space, whether you can get in or out, fire, you know, how do we put fires out at some of these places because it's not typical? It's a, it's a, it's a very real concern. I will tell you, knowing our fire department the way I do and, and others on the board do, they are an adapt and overcome group. There's not much that bothers them. This bothers them. So, um, I will tell you that, uh, I'm gonna be looking for a ro- a ro- more robust comment from our fire department relative to this, and I think it's only gonna help permitting going forward, um, to, to understand what some of their concerns are. I don't think it's a concern that they don't want them to ever exist. It's that, uh, things are changing so quickly. You went, we went from no onsite storage and now everything we have coming to us, and I'm right, you, you're, you're proposing onsite storage also, correct? Am I, that, is that, am I?
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, we, um, we, we acknowledge the concern, but also there's, um, you know, depending on the sizing of the batteries, which typically battery boxes associated with solar projects of this size uh, trip the threshold, but there's a whole nother level of, of permitting, um, that is required, uh, specific to the batteries, which the applicant acknowledges requires, um, you know, a whole nother level of coordination, um, with the fire department. Um, and that's typically handled, um, during the building permit processes. It's very specific as far as the electrical design, uh, the weight of the batteries.
I, I, I underst- I understand that, and, and that's how we typically done in the past, and what I'm telling you is that, that anecdotally, I'm being told that there's been, and I'm not saying your company, I'm saying in general. Sometimes when those conversations happen so late and the, and there's, and there's a concern from the fire department, there's a little bit of pushback. And I'm saying, I wanna nip that in the bud and head it off at the pass. So there is none of that, right? So all I'm saying is, is that if you have any kind of, um, and I know you provided us with a good bunch of information, if there's anything else more specific to the actual construction, here's what happened, or what we've had happen. Oh, this is what we're going to do. And in the meantime, uh, technology changes, they go with a new vendor, whatever the case may be, and it's, and it's a different. And it's, and it's a different type of unit. And we went from where a unit that was going to have some sort of entry and had certain requirements, I think now to units that. Because they're packing so many batteries, a different kind of battery, whatever the case may be, that there's not. And it's not considered a confined space, but the, but the issues with fighting the fire still exist, right? So it's a ver- and, and this is going to be, this is something I think the industry is struggling with right now. So it's not just, well, I'm not picking on you. Um, so at the end of the day, um, I, 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 I think that we'll just be, uh, looking for some sort of confirmed coordination. Um, before it gets too far down. It shouldn't be that the last inspection, that's when the fire department sees what's there and says, oh my, okay, wait a minute, we have a concern. Right? And then it gets into a, the discussion over the regulations. All I'm saying is if we have the information and we know what's going on, I think there should be a conversation prior to. So that everybody has a sense of, a level of, uh, of, of comfort with it.
Sure, absolutely. Um, I, I guess, I mean, I guess prior to what, I mean, what, what phase? Is, um, you know, would you feel would be most appropriate? Um, you know, like I said, I know every town and every department is different. Um, but. You know, most of the time, um, when you submit for the building permit, all of this. Uh, technical information at that point in time is made available and the post-coordination.
I think that's, Ryan, I think you're, you're right. I think of it, I think that would be the time. And I don't know if that's what you're arguing for or against, but I, I think that the, at the end of the day, when you're applying for the building permit is when oftentimes you have a definitive. Idea of what the infrastructure that you're going to be utilizing there, right? The appurtenances you're going to be using. So. I think that's the time to start the conversation. And so that at the end of the day, if there needs to be any kind of mitigating measures. That, that, and to, to, to turn your phrase to be good, uh, uh, community partners. That you would then at that time work with the, with the fire department. Uh, you know, if, if we had a specific condition that they wanted to propose, we could incorporate it now. So, you know, Chris, why don't we reach out? Again, uh, on all these solar arrays and ask, uh, the fire department if there's anything more specific so that everybody's on the same playing field. But I think it would be at that time, prior to issuance of a building permit, that the fire department has to basically review and, and sign off on the, with, uh, the proposed. Infrastructure. Right?
Sure. I mean, I, I feel like, um, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like that is a reasonable request. And I think that's the appropriate point in time at which to, um, have, open, open that dialogue, start that dialogue, uh, with the department. Like you said, to make sure you don't get too far down the project and everyone's left scratching their head. Um, I, I.
Right.
We can completely agree with that.
Alright.
Um.
Um. Is there anything else? I, I know that there's still some, I, 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 I would say this, uh, you know. Obviously we've had this public hearing. And I think you've even heard, uh, a butter say they take no exception to the idea that solar is going to be put in there. They're all in favor of solar. Uh, their major issues where the entrance egress, not only the, the, uh, the, uh. How robust it is, but you, you know, how it's going to hold up of a continued con- you know, construction usage and the safety of it, you know. Entrance egress, the like. And you, you've, it, it seems as though you've tried to address some of those things. So. Uh, again, obviously, yes.
Uh, Shelley Hopkins and Frank Ashley are raising their hands. Um.
Oh, both of them are. Who raised the hand first?
Uh, I believe Shelley did.
Oh, alright. Shelley, go ahead, please.
Uh, I win. Uh. First, I do want to say thank you to, um, to Ryan Young for, you know, for reaching out and, and kind of hearing some of our concerns, um, along the road. I will say that I, I'm pleased to see, you know, an attempt to at least, you know, somehow mitigate the, the. What we affectionately call Lake Clormont in the northwest corner of our, um, of the property. What, there were two other concerns that I don't see addressed and I have not heard be addressed that I'm still, um, concerned with. The first one being the existing culvert, um, in the, I believe it's the northeast corner of the property. Um, so the one that is between four Clormont Way and six Clormont Way. Um, I know we had some concerns about, you know, the structural integrity of that and whether or not it could sustain the heavy traffic. Um, so I, I don't know if there's been an engineer that's come out to look at it yet. Um, and if there's anything, you know, in writing that says, nope, it's been inspected and it can, you know, sustain the, the weight. That was issue number, um, the number one that still hasn't been addressed to my knowledge. And the second one is the widening of the road utilizing, um, only gravel. Um, and the concern about the maintenance of that, um, you know, in years to come. Uh, you know, if, if it's just left as gravel and if there's significant potholes or, um, you know, anything along those lines to your point. Kevin, um, when it comes to, you know, safety issues, um, and I'm. Now that you're mentioning fire concerns at the end of the road, that's also, um, you know, something that is concerning to us because, you know, the road itself can only. Currently handle one car at a time. So if you have multiple fire apparatus trying to get down the, you know, Clormont Way or, um, you know, passing any. You know, any other ambulances or anything like that, that's going to be near impossible with the roadway as it's currently constructed. Um, and so I'd just be concerned that if the extension of only five feet is all just gravel. You know, how, how safe will it be to travel up and down Clormont Way, um, you know, in the future? So those were just two additional items that, you know, we had voiced at the original meeting that I just haven't seen addressed yet. So I just wanted to know, um, what the applicant's plans were for, for addressing those, if any.
Uh, sure. I know that, um, this is Chris King with Atlantic Design again. Uh, we have, um, we have performed site visits out there. Um, I do have one of our project engineers, Nick Cleaney on the line. Um, who's, um, been out on the site, um, as well as, um, our, um, head chief civil engineer in the office has, uh, reviewed. Uh, not only the history of both of the culverts up there, um, uh, but also, um, the condition of it. Um, and, you know, we're confident that the, the culvert, I mean, the culvert. Were installed some time ago, uh, the second of which, um, being a, a metal, a 24-inch corrugated metal pipe culvert. Believe that the work was, um, done by the town. Um, and since then, um, you know, the, the culverts are. Um, you know, certainly adequate to sustain, um, uh, the heavy truck traffic. Um, that was, um, associated with, uh, the logging operations on site, uh, years ago. Uh, the, I think it's important to remember that the construction for the solar project is. Um, you know, in a relatively short period of time and, uh, the, the, the heavy trucks are, are really limited. Um, the, you know, I think that there are options out there if there was a concern, you know, I mean, the, the car, you know. You know, CDE, again, this is the, the, the front door, the, the way that they're getting in and out of the project. Um, and without having adequate safe access, uh, the site is, you know, it's, uh, it's not useless to them. Um, but certainly a risk. So, um, you know, we've. You know, we've done what we can, understanding it's an installed culvert that, you know, we don't have the design plans to, but. Um, applying engineering practices and, and observing how it was constructed in the condition that it's in today. Uh, there's no signs of, of failure or anything that would be, uh. Uh, you know, a, a failure during construction. And again, I think that it could be something as simple as, uh, putting a steel plate over the top of it. Uh, you know, if it was a concern, um, to help bridge the load and spread the load out instead of creating a, you know, a point source. Load directly over the, the crown of the, the existing culverts. Um, but again, we've, don't feel that that is necessarily, um. You know, if it's something that, um, you know, the board would feel more comfortable with, well, we could certainly provide some pictures and documentation from our. Uh, chief civil engineer, um, basically confirming, um, confirming that. Um. So, you know, as far as the, the structural integrity.
Yeah, uh, uh, you know what, Ryan?
Existing culverts that.
I'll answer that for you. Yeah, we're going to want that. That's, that's.
Okay.
Pretty, pretty, that's pretty straightforward. You know, one is, uh, one is represented as an existing rock culvert and I don't know what decade that was put in. Um, and then there's a 24-inch diameter culvert, right? So. I know we talked about it. I know we've asked you to look at it. It appears you've done some of that. And if there's a level of comfort and you've got engineers that are willing to sign off on that. Uh, I would expect that we would probably, it, you know, and again, that, that, that. There's, there's a certain level of inquiry into that that you need to do, right? It's one thing how it's constructed, you know. But additionally, you know, how much cover is on top and, and you know, you know the drill. So.
Yeah.
So I'm going, I'm going to imagi- I'm going to assume that, that some of that is already taking place, if not all of it, and you'd be prepared to provide us with that, that information. Um, I, I do want to speak to, uh, Shelley's concern. Uh, and not to get into too much, obviously this is a family-owned plot of land and, and we understand there's family members and, and there's family members that actually own Clormont Way. So ultimately in the future, whoever is responsible for Clormont Way as it sits today. They would be responsible for the maintenance going forward. And so in fairness to the process, we cannot require. The applicant or, you know, the solar company to be responsible for maintenance in the future. Our job is to ensure that what they're proposing will work and will, um, accommodate what they're proposing to do for particular traffic and the like. Uh, but the obligation after that would be like if it was an improvement to a town road that we asked them to do that. Widen out an intersection and soften the radiuses. The town going forward in the future would be responsible for the maintenance of, of, of that. Um, so I just, I, I think to be fair to the process, Shelley. Um, our job is to make sure that it's adequate and will, will hold up to the, to the rigors of the intended use, but. Um, after that, long-term maintenance falls upon whoever is responsible for maintaining it now. So. Uh, is there anything else, Shelley, or, 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 or since you jumped Frank, are we going to let him have a turn?
I will defer to Frank. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Ashley, your turn, sir.
Alright, this is Frank Ashley speaking. Uh. And we have had, uh, some pretty good conversation with Ryan Young and one of his engineers that came out to the site. Uh, we've talked a lot about the overflow of the retention pond. And the leaching. Um, I know he, he went into a little bit of the overflow part. But our, one of our biggest concerns is still the leaching. The water is, is being condensed into a small area, into the property's corner, which abuts us. That water has to go somewhere and it's going to leach down to the next lowest elevation, which is our cranberry bog and our pasture fields. So, and because of that, we had proposed with them possibly putting in a 12-inch line or something. But I don't think we can handle 12 inches of water. But I know we can handle four inches of water. So we had proposed to them, if, if they want to discuss this more in the future. A four-inch non-perforated tile line that would go from the bottom of their retention pond. Uh, directly to our reservoir, approximately 450 to six, four, 500 feet. So now all the water that would come into that retention pond would allow it to swell. And then four inches of water could continue was, continue to flow over several days into our reservoir, which then we can put downstream at a very slow rate. It stops the concern of water overflowing through the stormwater overflow. It'll prevent leaching into our fields and it'll prevent leaching onto John Ashley's property, which he also has concerns of. Uh. I know there's a cost to it. I don't know if it's possible to maybe offset some of that cost of burying that pipe. By reducing the retention pond by maybe 10% or something. Due to the fact that you're going to have an out of 40 inches continuously throughout every rain event. Um, and then that way we don't get any leaching effect at all from the retention pond. Because as it fills up, it'll come down through the pipe into our reservoir and then down into every reservoir and eventually into Lake Street. So that's our proposal to them and the board. I think it's a win-win for everybody. And if they can offset the cost, then there wouldn't be any additional costs. Um, by adjusting the size of the retention pond or other mitigating factors in the retention pond that they no longer have to. Build or use due to the fact that they're allowing four inches of water to continually flow out into a already controlled body of water. Um, so that addresses. Their northeast corner of the property of water from there. Um, and just a little comment about the covert across Clormont Way. We receive a portion of that water that comes through that covert. And if another pipe is added or a larger pipe is put in, where's that water going to go? Because it does not have the ability to cross Route 18 due to the water main line that is buried there. So only a small portion of water is allowed to cross Route 18. So the rest of it then comes across behind, I believe it's Shepherd's property and then it crosses Ambrose's property. And it is restricted on Ambrose's property, I believe with a 10-inch pipe. So that water has to go somewhere because only 10 inches of water can flow across his property and then into our 24-inch drainage. That's how we catch that water that comes through that culvert is into a 24-inch drainage pipe that then enters into our reservoir. So if the water system is changed crossing Clormont Way, it's going to affect those other properties. Being flooded out. So just a concern. I'm only going to get 10 inches of the water because that's all that can cross Ambrose's property because he has restricted it. So. That's something that the planning board needs to take a look at and walk around the site and see. Um, because it's going to open a whole nother can of worms if they put more water into that drainage system. So. Those are my comments for tonight and I hope in the future that we can hash out this leaching problem. So that the water does not leach into our pasture fields because, uh, a muddy pasture field is a loss all around.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, through the chair, uh, if you don't mind. Again, uh, this is Chris King with Atlantic Design. Um, I'll, I'll part, um, I'll part this out and I guess two areas. Um, you know, as noted, um, along the north, um, you know, our, our detention pond. Um, it's a, it's a detention pond. It's not a, it's not meant to function as an infiltrating basin. Um, so, you know, when we talk about, uh, leaching into the, the pasture fields. You know, that's not, uh, I guess the intent of the basin and that's ultimate, that's not what the basin is ultimately going to function as. The basin is, the basin is basically a speed bump, if you will, for the water that. Um, holds it back and then discharges it at a rate such that, I mean, currently, right now, there is water. Undeniably that rain falls on our property and it travels via overland flow, um, just due to the topology. Um, and leaves our property, um, and, um, flows through, uh, Mr. Ashley's property. So.
But you were not.
I mean, currently, currently.
Pond up against our property line.
Excuse me, sir. If you wouldn't mind, I give you the tendency of letting you.
Frank, 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 just let, just let him answer the, and then you can, you can respond afterwards, sir.
I will.
Um, thank you.
So, thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair. Um, so there's currently water leaving our property and exiting onto Mr. Ashley's property. Um, what, you know, again, we're designing to, there, there's a clear set of regulations, design requirements, not only set forth. And promulgated by Mass DEP, but also on the local level through the bylaw. And we're tasked with not increasing, not having any increase to the amount of water. Um, that, that leads our property and we've, we were tasked with that and we have submitted calculations to demonstrate. Um, that we are, we are meeting that requirement. So. Um, if the concern is water, uh, you know, going to the adjacent, um, pasture land, we're actually. You know, making that problem better. Um, um, you know, it's not by much, but we're, you know, technically reducing the, um, the rate of runoff in that direction. Um, so, you know, we're not, uh, we're not, um, exacerbating, um, the, the situation, um, by constructing this pond. And again, the pond is, 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 is functioning as a, a detention pond. So it's not designed as an infiltrate, an infiltrating pond. So when, you know, I hear leaching, um, into the adjacent, um, pasture land, you know, again, that's really a function of the overland flow and, uh, that's an existing condition. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's somewhat elementary. When rain falls, it's going to flow downhill and that's currently what is happening. Um, and I know that, you know, again, we're, we're set with a certain set of guidelines and we can't, you know, taking, uh, you know, it's over 500 feet to get to the reservoir that, um, is being mentioned, um, and that's on a property that, um, the, you know, CBE is not in control of. Um, and, you know, it's, it, it, number one, it's not required by stormwater policy and number two, you know, it may, it may create a situation where the project now, it may achieve what Mr. Ashley would like to achieve, but that brings it not, a non-compliance with, uh, stormwater policy because at the end of the day, again, we're tasked with reducing that peak rate of runoff and just to have a, you know, an open pipe, uh, discharging onto an adjacent property that's, you know, typically frowned upon, um, from any peer reviewer. Um, and, you know, Adam, uh, Crand with EPGs, um, could certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, the idea is to, to spread it out and mimic existing drainage characteristics and patterns. And, you know, that's exactly what we're doing in addition to, you know, doing what we can on our site to direct it in a manner that's not going to, uh, negatively impact, um, the adjacent landowner. Um, so, you know, I, you know, I don't think that there's, you know, I don't think there's a requirement to do anything up on that northern edge. Um, like I said, I know that a lot of thought was put into it. We actually looked at the numbers and the linear length and, uh, you know, the resulting percent, uh, slope. Um, and, you know, again, it's, it's, um, I, I don't think it's a, uh, I don't think it's a solid practice to just to daylight our pond into a reservoir on an adjacent property, um, because you somewhat lose control of the flow at that point. And, uh, depending on, I mean, you could play the hypothetical, uh, you know, all day with this one, but in the event that either of the properties change hands, then it's no longer a, a desirable, uh, outcome, um, you know, that creates a whole nother set of problems. Um, as far as the covert, um, that would be, you know, the extra pipe, if you will, going under Claremont, you know, again, the intent isn't to, uh, direct, um, additional stormwater. Um, we're basically taking stormwater that, you know, if you take a, a, a look at, and again, we've provided the calculations and the figures to show that, um, this pipe is really meant to just alleviate the flooding at Miss Hopkins' property. Um, that water ultimately is going to the same design point, if you will, uh, whether it is temporarily, um, held up in the low area, um, or whether it's diverted to alleviate that flooding condition, um, you know, we have, again, the calculation showing that we're not, um, you know, increasing, uh, the runoff, um, to that, uh, particular design point in that area. Um, and so, you know, again, that's, we're tasked with a certain set of design criteria, um, really outlined within, uh, Mass, uh, Massachusetts Stormwater Policy. Um, and, you know, that's what this design, it meets all of those parameters and the calculations are provided such that, you know, it, it, it clearly shows that, uh, the, the widening of the road is a non-impact from a, from a runoff standpoint. And then in particular, this pipe is really a localized, um, uh, mitigation for, uh, that localized flooding that is really, um, you know, no fault of, of CBE and the solar project, um, as I think it's been acknowledged by, you know, multiple parties this evening. Um, and it's, you know, it's, it's mitigating a pre-existing problem. And again, you know, we're doing what we can on our project or within reason, uh, you know, close nearby. Um, and this was, this was an easy fix that when, um, we look at it, uh, more globally in that area, it's, you know, it's really not changing anything other than, um, hopefully allowing that, uh, you know, northwest portion of the Hopkins property to, um, you know, avoid, uh, you know, what's referred to as Lake Claremont. So, um, you know, again, I encourage the board to take a look at it tomorrow when you're out on site. I know that, um, our engineer will be there as, as well as Mr. Young. Um, and I think it, uh, is going to be clear that the addition of that pipe is certainly going to make a difference and, um, help alleviate that issue. And then if you were just to take a walk out back, um, up along the north, you know, again, where it's an, it's an existing condition, that's why they call it existing conditions. And, um, you know, I'm not, I don't have the knowledge that Mr. Ashley does, but I, I, I can say that the runoff being directed towards that area, um, is, you know, although it's a slight reduction, is going to be reduced, uh, due to the implementation of the detention ponds. So I don't want to, uh, belabor it, uh, you know, too much more. Hopefully I've offered a little bit of, uh, insight and clarity as far as, you know, what we're tasked with as, as engineers, um, you know, what we've tried to do, uh, to, you know, do the best we can to respond, um, to the, to the concerns raised. But again, you know, I think that, um, although it, it, it's certainly a creative solution that Mr. Ashley proposes, I just, you know, from an engineering standpoint, a land ownership standpoint, uh, potential impacts are long-term, uh, long-term issues as far as, uh, property ownership transferability. I, I just, it's, it's not a conventional, um, it's not a conventional or a practical solution, um, and certainly not needed. Uh, again, I don't mean to beat a, a dead horse here, but considering we're meeting all of the, the design requirements set forth, not only by the state, but also at a local level, um, you know, we feel like we've, um, demonstrated certainly we meet the criteria of approval from a stormwater standpoint. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I'll address, so I'm going to strongly disagree with what that party had just said because partially, I'll agree with him 100% that it will alleviate the Claremont Pond, but where is that water going to go? Because he's concentrating it and he's moving it at a higher velocity downstream. That water has no place to go because it's only a 10-inch pipe crossing Ambrose's property. I have a 24-inch pipe that it can come to, so I don't care about that water coming across Claremont Way personally, but it is going to raise havoc with everybody else on the other side of me, upstream of me and downstream of Claremont Way. That piece of property in the middle cannot handle more water at a higher rate of speed and that's all that's going to do. Now, what's for the water into our pastures? I'll strongly disagree that he says it'll make the problem better because it's going to make it worse. You're taking water from 16 acres, only a portion of it is actually going to make it to the retention pond, but it is concentrating water right up against our property line. And I will drill a hole tomorrow when you guys come out and there is a clay layer about 18 to 24 inches below our pasture that that water rides on and it makes a muddy mess out of our field. And if he concentrates more water directly in that corner from the proposed site, that water now is being funneled into a tighter corner because he's put it into a pond. So naturally it's going to leach out, it's going to leach downstream, but in a more concentrated area, in a more concentrated time. And that's the problem we have with it. A pipe or something of that nature would allow the retention pond to swell and then allow it to drain back down. I'm sure they can put sediment, uh, tees in the bottom of it to help with sediment. I'm not worried about the pipe on our property. We're willing to maintain it in writing if need be. It's only a four-inch pipe and I know we can handle that water directly into the reservoir. And I think that alleviates even the leaching effect that's going towards John Ashley's property, which he has issues with also. So, but I will be around tomorrow if I'm allowed to or be invited to that site visit. I will gladly invite the board onto my property and show them where the water crosses our property and what we can handle and what we can do to help this project go forward. I'm actually trying to propose solutions versus just putting up a wall and saying no. Um, whatever we have to do on paper to change the retention pond to whatever nomenclature they want it to be, that's fine. I, I don't care. I just don't want a deluge of water coming down every time it rains or making a muddy pasture. Um, and those are the solutions that I come up with that, that don't just pass the buck down to the next property line. Um, I'm not trying to pass it down to the next person and screw up somebody else's property when I have reservoirs that can handle it. So.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ashley. If, um, if we're out there and we able to make contact with you, we will probably do that. I, I cannot, um, I can't invite you onto the private property. That would have to be the property owners. Um, but, um.
I'm sorry. I'm inviting.
We'll reach out.
Somebody who wants to come over to my property and, and I can make.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And show you the soil composition because they said they didn't see a clay layer, but in all their test pits, they don't go deep enough to get to the clay layer. If you follow the elevation changes, the clay layer is about 18 to 24 inches below our surface and in some places it's even shallower than that. So, um, and I just.
No, I, I, I hear you and, and, and you're right. You have intrinsic knowledge of, of, of that location. You've been there forever in the day. This is what you do for a living. You work the land. I get it, right? Um, you have virtually these same concerns with the, with the prior project, right? So I, you know, there's no, there's no arguing that. Uh, but to the applicant, who's, who's, who's?
This is me, uh, Jim, Jim, um, Mr. Ashley, you, you, you gave a very good explanation and detailed. So I'm just curious, do you have a background in engineering or, uh, site work? Just so I understand where you came from and what your solution is.
Um, I've done a lot of site work, but I've been in agriculture my entire life. And in agriculture, you can't control mother nature, but if you can work with her the best you can and moving water is always an issue in agriculture, right? You, you need it when you need it and you don't want it when you don't want it. And the rains come whether you want them or not. So being able to control water crossing your property is huge. So I've got 47 years of doing it on our property and, I mean, there's, there's a lot of tried true methods, especially with tile lines, whether they're perforated, non-perforated, doing all kinds of silt removal. I mean, if you bury, bury tile lines, the water comes out of tile lines like well water, crystal clear, clean. There's, there's no, no sediment in it whatsoever. So, but.
Right, you gotta, you have to understand, Mr. Ashley, not to cut you off, but we, we, I think everybody knows how everybody feels, right? There's a certain amount of standards that need to be designed. That's the state, federal government, local government, that, right? And, and the applicant has expressed that they, I think what you have to appreciate is that, and you, you understand this from working it, oftentimes agriculture work in and around with wetlands, water and all, there's a lot of exemptions that are given that are not transferred to projects like this, right? There are a lot of legal ways that you can, and I'm, I'm going to echo only because I've been doing this a while myself, right? I'm not an engineer, but we have our peer review guy, we can ask him. But the idea that you could put a pipe in the bottom of a detention basin, it defeats the purpose of the detention basin that is supposed to at a certain point in time, and I hope you can appreciate this, right? Is to remove, have a, a residence time there, have the silts and all be removed and that's why that, you know, the stone construction of there, you know all this stuff. So I just, I, I, I think it's important for everybody involved with this conversation to understand that your solution may be in fact the best one and may be a reasonable one. Does it meet the regulations by which these folks are required to design this? Right? So that, I, I think there's going to be a, 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 a question and I think we've got a little bit of the answer tonight. Um, but, uh, I think again, agriculture oftentimes, right? The cranberry bog growers here in town, they're never coming to conservation to do cranberry bog maintenance fixes, way, drop, because you have exemptions, because you guys know what you're doing and you have a plan, you have an agricultural plan and all that other stuff. But that's just not the way when it comes to this type of development. So, um, so just keep that in mind while it may be the best solution and it does sound like it's a reasonable solution. I don't even know if it's legal for them to even consider it or to, 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 to do it. So, um, all right, um, we've got a whole host of other stuff to get going on, on tonight too. So I'm not trying to cut this off, uh, but I am going to move this along. Uh, in fairness to the other applicants for tonight and all, and, and board members who are now going on, it's close to two hours of a meeting, um, if there's nothing imperative or really, I, I know the applicant asked for us to set conditions tonight and all that. I, I'm not prepared to do that. I mean, we need to get final confirmation and, and we have to go out and do an inspection. Um, there may be further review that conservation may require. I, so, um, again, we're all giving our best effort here, but we need to, we need to move on to the next item, uh, in fairness to everybody. So, uh, unless there is anything, uh, monumental that needs to be said on this project, um, please say it now. If not, um, I'll entertain a motion that we continue this public hearing to, uh, well, you've got two choices, right? You can go to June 1st via Zoom or we can go to June 15th via the, uh, um, in person.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to request a continuous. Uh, thank you, uh, for your time tonight.
Sure.
I guess we'd like to hear from Adam Crand about, um, you know, when they think they can, uh, advance the review, assuming that we're going to hand deliver a check tomorrow.
I guess that puts you up on, um, Adam, you think you'd get something back by June 1st or, you know, ahead of time so that we would have it for the meeting?
We could try. I mean, normally it's a two-week thing and there's a holiday in there, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right.
I don't want to guarantee it, but, uh, we can do what we can.
Well, we can schedule it for June 1st and, and, you know, if there's anything, if, if they don't have it, obviously we move on to the next date. And if there's anything that's borne out of the conversations tomorrow or further conversations with the butters, then they could certainly would have the opportunity at the June 1st meeting to, uh, to provide us with that. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to continue. Was there another comment? No? All right. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for a proposed solar, like 32 Middle World Road to June 1st, 6 o'clock via Zoom.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Most many supporters, if there's no further conversation or discussion on the motion, uh, roll call vote. Uh, Debbie Robbins.
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye. Jim Frey.
Aye.
Jim Frey's aye. Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye. Uh, Bob Joe's.
Aye.
Bob Joe's, aye. Kevin DeMaris, aye. Passage unanimous. We'll see you guys on the first, well, actually we'll, some of us will see some of you tomorrow. Okay. Uh, next on our agenda, it's item number six, right? Chris? Yep. Item number six, uh, this is a, a new public hearing I'm calling to order for the first time. Uh, this is for an applicant submitted site plan review application for, uh, Gurnee Mola Solar LLC, solar energy system in Freetown, uh, proposing a large-scale solar photovoltaic facility located on approximately 38 acres of land, uh, off of Gurney Road. Um, again, this is a public hearing. The public is invited to take part and participate, uh, but, uh, kindly would ask that those who, uh, would like to do that would just either raise their hand, push the raise hand button on the computer or whatever, or just politely interrupt me to get my attention. Uh, typically how this works is we allow the applicant to make a presentation. They will do that, then we will open it up to the board and public for questions or comments. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, this is in peer review. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, John Connell, SciTech Engineering.
How are you, John? So, uh, this is, this is in peer review currently?
Uh, the peer review is done, um, through ConCom. ConCom has performed the peer review on, um, on this project as well.
But, but we haven't done, so this has not gone. But we haven't done, so this has not gone through peer review for conformity with our site plan review regulation?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. All right. So you're basically making your first, your first presentation. So I know that there may be some interested parties here. So again, for those that are looking to take a look at the plans, you go to the town's website, freetownma.gov, boards and committees, planning board. On the right-hand side, it'll say May eighteenth, meeting materials. Click on that and you'll see the PDF for the plan for the Gurnee solar system. So, John, go right ahead and make your presentation, sir.
Okay, thanks. Is it, is it, can we share the screen?
You want to share your screen, Chris? Let him share the screen, Chris. Thanks, buddy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Should be able to do it now.
Are those showing up? The Gurnee Mola?
Yes.
Mills, are those showing up?
Yep, we can see them. Well, not anymore. Now we're seeing the agenda. They were there before, though.
This one here? Is that good?
Now it looks like you stopped sharing your screen.
How's that?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, the Gurnee Mola, this is a thirty-eight acre site. It's on the westly side of Gurnee Road. It's, this is, you can see it's also to the south of Fallbrook. This is the open, the overgrown fields in the back. That's the title sheet, the cover sheet. Is a eighty-scale overall. You'll see the existing buildings up front on Gurnee Road. Where the hand is moving there, there's an existing path that goes out to the back. It goes through the fence and then that continues out to the, to the town property out in that, we'll call it the northwesterly corner here. This is the overall site plan. You can see the solar arrays. And then you'll see a limit of clearing. Detention basins, proposed detention basins here. There are three of them total. The access drive does cross, well, there's an existing path path. It's about nine feet wide. We're proposing a, I think we've got eighteen feet crossing. And then it tapers down a little bit once we get on site. But we propose to extend the existing culverts, put new retaining walls on either side of that crossing. And there's, I think there's about a fifty, fifty-foot square foot replication. And we propose for the fifty-foot square foot replication and alteration in that area. There's no other wetland impacts beyond that. The entire site would be fenced. The panels would be fenced. Temporary erosion controls around the whole site. And those will be taken out in accordance with our order of conditions prior to our certificate of compliance. We're also working with conservation. We're hoping to get some input, you know, from the board about, you know, just some general input. But also the access, it was brought to our attention, that the access that currently traverses the site and goes out to the town parcel has historically been used by the town. And we were asked by the Conservation Commission if we could still provide that access. So the applicant has agreed to do that and I'm working up a couple of different layouts for that for conservation. So if you have any input on that, I'd like to incorporate the planning board comments into the conservation comments as well. Try to, you know, try to get everything done for the peer review engineer to look at one set for, you know, so they coincide. I just want them to be consistent for both the planning and conservation. So whatever input that you could provide or any questions you may have, certainly try to answer whatever question you may.
Yeah, quick question. Are we looking at the former Stillwater site? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes. Yeah, those are the buildings up front. I think it was fascinators. They moved fascinators of some kind. That's what I see on all the deeds and other information.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I was muted. I was droning on about something. I didn't realize that I was muted, so I apologize. Yeah, this is the Stillwater site, Bob, down on, you know, Gurnee Road just before the bridge there. So I'm, I'm, John, I'll speak in generalities, right? So I'm guessing because this is now going for peer reviews through planning, that there's going to be some comments that we're going to get from EPG. But in general, it's a large site, right? So looking at the plans, you know, I think we're going to need greater detail or greater detail should be provided. I understand that the business is not in use anymore. But using this scale of plan or it's difficult to see, you know, what's the maneuverability? How would vehicles get in and out to the site? You know, obviously, we're going to look where our laydown areas again. It would seem this is one of those better sites for this because you already had a commercial enterprise and there's already area to do some of that. But if it's not already on plans, it should be demonstrated and proven out that, yes, the delivery vehicles and the types of vehicles that are going to be utilizing this can safely get in and out. Noise, obviously. So we're going to be looking at their battery storage, what's the size of the facility? Is it an enclosed, is it a confined space or is there accessibility to it? Obviously, that triggers some further review from the fire department or at least comment to that. Lighting, obviously mitigation relative to visual screening from a butters. So I know in other plan sets we have gotten, they've been kind enough to put on the offsets or from, or the distances from existing structures, houses, whatever, to the, you know, closest solar panel or the closest limit of work or something along those lines. And particularly on plans this scale, what is the scale on this plan? Because I know it's a large plan.
The overall site plan was an eighty scale and then I
Yeah, it's a one in eighty, right, right, right.
I have the three and, three and four are both forty scales. That has a lot more detail on it.
Yep, yep. I've seen, yeah. So sheets one and two are eighty, three and four are forty. Yep. And so at the end of the day, what I'm saying is, a lot of times that helps eliminate some concerns from neighbors. You know how close it is? Am I going to be able to see it? You know, there is, again, a benefit to this that most of the neighboring properties are surrounded by wetlands. So you can't do anything within the wetlands or, and you're limited to what your buffer zone incursion can be anyway. So, so those, that type of information would be helpful. Obviously, wanting to see, conservation is going to be acutely concerned about the access, the easement access. But obviously, we want to see that on the plan. You're right. We want to incorporate those changes into both sets of plans so that, so that everybody's working for the same document. I apologize. My earpad, my earplug just died, so. Can you guys still hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah, good. All right. So I think in general, right, John, that's, that's going to be what the board's sort of underlying constant concerns with these types of projects, right? This is, for all intents and purposes, it would appear that this is out in the woods, you know. But obviously, there's going to be some impact. So I think just to speak in generalities, that's, that's what you need to be looking at. You're going to, you're really going to be responding to what EPG says.
Okay.
I'm sure, I'm sure that they're going to have, they do a fine job. They're going to have comments like they do on every one of them. So, do you have any preliminary thoughts on how you would gain access to that portion of property that the town has easements to, right? Because it, we certainly don't want to make it any more difficult to get to, right? So it can't be something where we have to contact people to get inside of a gate or whatever, right? So, they did, they did, yeah, they did something similar. I'll tell you, John, they did something similar on a, on a project in, on that side of town, not too far from there, where a public access was, was required. And they basically did a, I'm going to call it a six-foot wide woodchip path that went around the perimeter of the fence that gave us sufficient access to the, to the area of concern. So I can tell you that is something that has been approved by us before. So if that is something that you're looking at doing, that might be a, a reasonable solution to your problem.
Yeah, that, that sounds good.
Okay. So we have any folks here from the general public that would like to ask a question or make a comment on this project? If you do, just politely raise your hand or state your name and for the record and we'll, we'll allow you to talk. Chris, is there anybody waving or trying to get in on this?
Lauren is.
Who? Yes. Hi.
Hi.
So I have some concerns with the
For the record, who is this? Just for the record, dear, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. No, my name's Lauren Collins. I'm one of the butters. I actually have two properties that have but this plan.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Where are you located? Are you on Gurnee Road?
One house is on thirteen Gurnee and the other is two Bayberry Lane.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So my concern is with the size of this project and the impact that it's going to have to the wildlife that is in that area, particularly if they just said they're going to fence the entire thing off. So those are my concerns, basically.
Okay. I'll give you just a general, and again, I know I'm not speaking for the applicant here, but just general education. That's part of our, that's part of our responsibility as the planning board. This is an allowed use in, in, in that area. You know, it's zoned. It's an allowed, it's an allowed use. There is a requirement for safety code and our own bylaws that require it to be fenced in. But I will tell you that your sentiments and your concerns are no different than most every other project we've had for that. But just understanding that, that this is in essence a by right project to a certain degree. It is site plan review. They got to work with us. We got to work with them to try to come up with a reasonable accommodation for it. But, yes, it is overwhelming. There is no doubt about it. There does require, part of the application, there does require that there be some sort of impact statement relative to how this, this would affect the town. If we already don't have that, it would be wise for the applicant to provide us with that. Anytime there's a site plan review or special permit, we ask for impacts. Most often times, they're negligible when it comes to solar arrays relative to the overall impact on the community. But certainly site-specific, there may be impacts that need to be talked about. So you're not alone in those concerns, dear.
Right. Particularly where there's another large solar farm, you know, right around the corner.
Right. And again, again, just, I hope you can appreciate our position. We can't, we can't deny this solar permit application because there's another solar permit after, or solar project that was down the road, right? That's not how, that's not how zoning works.
Right. I understand.
Right. I know, I know you're doing, I'm saying this for the benefit of everybody who's listening. I know you understand. So, excuse me. So our job is to take each one individually and look at them and try to make them the best project that they can be. And so obviously, this is reviewed soup to nuts by our peer review engineer. This is going to cost the applicant, I'm sure, a pretty penny when it comes to paying for our engineer to review their stuff. But that's just the way the world works when they're doing this, so it's an expected expenditure. But we will look at, you know, impacts to wetlands. We'll look at, at, at stuff like that. But I, again, think the applicant would be remiss if they didn't
John, you're still sharing your screen.
I'm sorry, what?
I was just trying to check an email. Mills, they, we had submitted a check for the peer review a while back. So is that typical? You wait for the first meeting and then request the peer review?
John, I'll, I'll just, Chris is going to do what he's directed to do. And, and so if I did not direct him to do it, that's on me. Secondly, yes, typical and standard would be we wait for the initial app, public hearing so that you can not only incorporate board's comments and have EPG look at that. We could also oftentimes refine what we have EPG look at and it also would incorporate comments from the general public. There have been instances, and if we are approached, we will not, we will allow it to go out for peer review prior to the first meeting. Sometimes it, it, it expedites the process. But no, typically, standard would be unless either the applicant is asked for or, or, you know, there's difficulty in getting a public hearing date and it's going to be a significant timeout from that, then, yeah, we might do that. But typically, we wait for the first public hearing to, to, so that you can incorporate all these comments. So.
Hey, I didn't know how that worked. Thanks.
No, and that's all right. So if we already have the check and it's a, it's a sufficient funds to, to, to do this, Chris, let's send it out for peer review. And, and we'll have environmental partners look at it, obviously, the stormwater management, safety. And it's, it's starting to become a reoccurring theme, Adam. I know that we talked, you know, about refining exactly what we're looking for. But, you know, obviously, we're looking at light, noise, safety forensics and egress, stormwater management, that type of stuff. So we'd obviously ask you to, to look at that. If you need further clarification, contact the office, Adam, and, and we can do that for you. All right. So anybody else that has have any questions or comments or concerns about this? All right. Keeping in mind, folks, this is just the first meeting. There will probably be changes to, well, there will be changes to this plan. John's already offered that up. Whether they're significant, whether they're minimal, it all depends. We ask that you will know, those are butters that were notified by green card or by certified mail. You will not be notified again going forward of the next meeting date. We're going to continue this to a date, time, and certain. It's incumbent upon the interested parties to make sure that they follow along and, and, you know, check our agendas. Call the office, email the office. We could certainly keep you in the loop that way, too. And we will progress that. We will be going after the June first meeting. John, I don't know that you're going to get peer review back in time for June first, so we're going to go out to June fifteenth on this. All right? Somebody say yes.
Okay.
Anyway. Okay, good. Yeah, that's fine. So, so this will be an in-person meeting to be held up at the, at the police station. So if there's nothing else from anybody right now, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the proposed solar array on Gurnee Road to June fifteenth, six o'clock at the community room at the police station. Thank you.
Second.
Second, most many supporters, there's no further discussion. Roll call vote. Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye. Jim Frey.
Aye.
Jim Frey's aye. Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye. Bob Joes.
Aye.
Bob Joes, aye. Kevin DeMaris, aye. All right, folks, we've got two more things. I'm going to try and move along as quickly as I can, but being fair to everybody. So just bear with me. John, you're here for the next one, right? So this is item number seven. This would be, I would call to order a site plan review application, public hearing for a large-scale solar to be located off of Simmons Street. The company is Petty Solar LLC. And the, the, is, the applicant is represented by SciTech. I'm not mistaken, correct, John? You're representing this one, too, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I will call this public hearing order. Okay, so I will call this public hearing order. Again, for those interested parties, the same rules as the last time. Applicant makes their presentation, we're gonna end up sending this out for peer review, we'll ask some questions, you can ask your questions, and then we'll be continuing this meeting onto another night, so, uh, you can follow along on the town's website. Um, so, uh, go ahead, John.
Is it okay if I share the screen again?
Please.
Um, this is the Simmons Street project here, um, you'll, you'll, this is the, um, the locus, you'll see, uh, Route twenty-four over to the west, and then you'll see at the end of Simmons Street here, it's a live wooded parcel, um, existing conditions, this is a one inch equals fifty, you can see, uh, the end of Simmons Street, um, it, it terminates right here, and then there's a cot path that does enter the site. Um, you kind of lose it after a little while, and it, and it does open up, um, but, we, uh, you'll see the perimeter here anyway, and then the, uh, resource areas, um, right? You can see the upland portion here, and upland portion here. This is the proposed, uh, array, or two arrays on the same parcel here. You can see our access is proposed to come in off of Simmons, it'll be gravel, uh, gravel access drive, we're basically widening, uh, much like we've been on the other project, the existing cot path, we do have a wetland crossing, um, it's, it's really, it's crossed already, but we do have a, uh, with the cot path, but we do have an alteration there with retaining walls, and then the replication area, thirty-seven hundred fifty square feet replication area. This is the gravel access drive, um, out to the back of right. Uh, same thing, fence, uh, permanently fenced, temporary erosion control measures, um, and more or less the same thing, they'll have the battery backup, we will get some detail, uh, we have detail on that already, but, um, we can, we can coordinate that with the fire department, or get any input from them, uh, they may have. Um, I think that's, that's really, uh, this also is going out for peer review with conservation, uh, we do have their comments. Um, I'm, I'm finishing up the, the, uh, response to that, and, um, you know, whatever, again, whatever input you may have, that I can incorporate, incorporate that into this plan set, might save us, um, some time in the long run, if I can get it done now.
Okay, thank you, um, any from, anybody from the board? Obviously, John, the same concerns that we were interested in the other projects, is what we're gonna be interested in, in this one, so let's make sure that those are addressed, if they're not already.
Yep.
Um, we do, and I was remiss not mentioning it prior, but, uh, we, we, we appreciate the fact that there needs to be a certain amount of tree clearing done for shading purposes, right? Or, or for, for unshading purposes, if you will. Uh, but what we have asked is, uh, in those areas that are, where you can, that rather than taking down the entire tree, that you would, and again, there's a specific word for it, I don't know what it is, but that you would leave, you know, ten, fifteen feet, whatever it was, of the tree remaining, uh, because, uh, you will have, uh, you know, some of those trees will survive and grow, their root systems will, will thrive, and, and will, will take care of any of those issues relative to erosion in some cases, or just what they're supposed to do. They will provide, uh, future habitat for insects and birds and, and small mammals and all. So rather than, you know, cutting it down to the bare stump, uh, we have seen where this is a more, um, it's more beneficial to the, uh, to the environment. Additionally, uh, we've been asking for, uh, pollinator mixes to be used, uh, for ground cover, uh, to help offset the, as, as the previous, uh, Butter had said, the, you know, the impacts to, to, to the, to the wildlife, right? Um, so to, to offset some of those things, uh, those are the types of things that are offered up as a, um, I wanna, you know, it's, it's almost a, a happy compromise, or at least some sort of mitigation, uh, in recognition of, of the disturbance that you're proposing. Is there anybody here from the general public that would like to make a comment or have any questions? Nope, okay. Uh, we've either bored everybody to death, or, uh, there's not that many Butters around this project, so. Um, this is gonna go through peer review, again, John, there's, uh, there's no way, we've, we're keeping environmental partners very, very busy, so there's no way that this is gonna get reviewed in time to do it on Ju- on June first. Um, so, this is gonna have to go out to the fifteenth. Uh, I would, I would say that whenever we do get the peer review letter, John, if you would want to obviously get that and react to that, if there's things you're comfortable with making the changes to, you know, go ahead and do all that before our next meeting, and if you, if, if you have a response to those things, or say, you know, EPG asked us to do X, Y, Z, X, Y, Z has been provided on the plan set that I've, I'm now giving you, you know, so you, you can, you can shave some time off the overall project by, by working it that way, and once you get into peer review, it's a pretty steady process, right? Review, response, uh, we have a meeting, review, response, we have a meeting, so.
Once I get the letter. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
See, once I get the letter, so I, I'll make the changes, or, or, uh, I can, um, respond directly with the review engineer, and, um, you know, make those, respond, make the response.
Yes.
Uh, revise the plan, maybe at the next meeting.
Yeah, what, what I'm saying is, John, you don't have to wait till you have a meeting, then provide the responses to us, and then we fire them off to EPG, no, no.
Okay.
This, I don't, we, we typically don't want to, to get into the, the weeds and the minutia of the, of those engineering details, you know, uh, until you folks, or, or, or our side and your side comes to an impasse, whether it's just in, in a design, uh, uh, standard interpretation, or just a different philosophy on it. Uh, but until then, that stuff, it needs to be ironed out between the professionals, uh, and we know that EPG's got our best interest, you know, relative to the engineering side of things, and, and we'll take care of the rest. So, that's the way we can do it. So if there's no other comments, uh, from the board.
Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Dave Cross, I, uh, associate, uh, member of the planning board, you remember me, right?
You are, yes, hi, Dave.
I just have a quick, I have a quick question on the, on the plan there. The piece of, uh, the road at the end of Simmons Street before the road that goes into the property, who owns that?
This is a paper street. That you're talking about, this, this area here?
Yeah, that piece, yep.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, an extension of Simmons, so that's a, that's a paper street.
So the town owns that?
Well, right, well, right, I guess, more importantly, and, and if we don't know the answer, that's the question that David's asking. Who actually owns that?
Yeah.
Yes, it's a paper street, and what does that mean? It's a street that was approved through an approval process, but was never constructed, right? That could be for a number of reasons, it could be that the developer ran out of money and didn't wanna continue, it could be that the town didn't require them to do any type of construction on that point until they came back before the board to, to, to further the development, so. That development over there was done, what, I'm guessing in the seventies? Maybe?
I thought I saw the.
Okay, so it's a forty to fifty years ago that it was done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we can get, Dave, we can get confirmation on that. I'm going to assume, unless, John, you know definitively, I'm going to assume that in fact the town would, would own that.
I'll, I'll check, I'll check, yeah.
Yeah, you'll check, uh, we'll, we'll check with town records too, through the assessor's office, Dave, and, and, and all, you know, because it may be that the town only accepted Simmons Street, or the layout of Simmons Street up until, uh, a certain, uh, point, and then after that, it might be, uh, that it's still, uh, developer owned, or what have, or privately owned, so, we'll get that, uh, was there a greater point to that question, Dave, or was it, that was your question?
The question, yeah, the question is, if somebody else owns it, how can you just dump some gravel there and call it yours, you know?
Right, so, so, if, if it were private property, Dave, and that's a very good point, they would have to get, uh, the owner of the property's sign off on that, that's typically done through legal easement, purchase of property, uh, acknowledgement of use of property through an application and signature on that. There's a number, if it's through the town, then this is how they would gain access to that, they would propose it to us. We obviously let the road commissioners, the selectmen know about it, uh, we would ask them for comment. As we do with every one of these plans, we send it out to every one of the boards, and ask them for comment, if I'm not mistaken, right, Chris? Don't we do that? And if we, if we haven't already, it, it needs to get done. Um, so, um, we'll follow up, Chris, follow up on that, let's talk and find out who, who, who owns it, and, uh, let's just, if in fact it is the town, let's just make sure that we, uh, we fortify, uh, the notification to the selectmen with a follow-up email that says, hey, just FYI, this is what's being proposed within the town roadway layout, we're obviously permitting this, these are the conditions we're gonna use to, to permit it, do you have any comment on it, alright?
Okay.
Alright, fair enough, Dave?
Sounds good.
Alright, thanks, buddy, appreciate it. Alright, anything else? Alright, I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for proposed solar ray at the end of Simmons Street to Jan- I almost said January myself, June fifteenth, six o'clock, at the commu- uh, the community, uh, room at the new police station.
So moved.
Second.
Need a second, thank you, motion made, supported, any further discussion, uh, roll call vote, Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye, Jim Freitz.
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye, Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye, Bob Jones. Um, Bob Jones is silent, aye, uh, Kevin Damaris, aye, motion passed unanimously. Alright, one last item, folks, please just bear with me, I apologize. Um, we have a public hearing, uh, that we need to hold relative to a, uh, zoning bylaw change. So I will call to order a public hearing for the planning board. They're holding this public hearing to consider a proposal amendment to the Town of Free Town Protective Bylaws, Article eleven zoning bylaw, which, uh, is submitted, which was submitted for the two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting warrant. The proposed amendment is summarized as follows. amend the Town of Free Town Protective Bylaw, Article eleven zoning bylaws by deleting section eleven point one-one in its entirety, and to be replaced with the new section eleven point one-one, on file with the Town Parks Office, and don't take any action relative there, too. What is, in a nutshell, and we talked about this, we know all, this is, it's just a formality, it's an administrative deal, it's the, adopting the new definitions and the, uh, new, uh, FEMA flood maps. Chris, am I, am I, uh, correct in that?
Uh, yes, it's, um.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have, you've been provided with this information, and we had talked about this before. Simply put, if we do not adopt these things, then the town will no longer be able to, or residents within the town will no longer be able to get flood insurance, uh, and we all know, uh, it's becoming a bit of a distant memory, but a lot of us remember what happened in two thousand, uh, what was it, eleven, that, uh, or ten, that caused so much uh, pain and suffering with the floods, so, um, if we don't do this, it's my opinion, we're letting the folks in Free Town down, so. Uh, is there anybody from the general public here, or anybody from the board that has any, uh, comments relative to this? Again, I think this is probably the fourth or fifth time we've done this in the last several years, because the federal government keeps changing their minds on things. Alright, if not, this was supposed to be something done before COVID, but it got pushed back because of, uh, no town meetings and all, so. That being said, I will entertain a motion that we, uh, that we recommend for adoption at our annual town meeting, uh, the changes as proposed, uh, for article, uh, excuse me, for, uh, yeah, Article eleven point eleven, uh, of our zoning bylaw, to reflect the new changes and the new FEMA, uh, flood rate map.
I'll make a motion to accept the new FEMA flood map.
Thank you, I need a second.
Second.
Motion made, supported, if there's no further discussion on the motion. Coming on, uh, roll call vote, Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Deb Robbins, aye, Jim Freitz. Jim Freitz. Chris Mello.
There we go, sorry about that, couldn't get it.
Chris Mello, aye, Jim Freitz.
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye, Bob Jones.
Aye.
Bob Jones, aye, don't sound so excited, Bob, really, Kevin Damaris, aye. Um, motion passes unanimously. The good news is, um, one of you guys may in fact have to get up and speak a little briefly to it, whether it's Chris or a planning board member, I, I won't be around for the, uh, annual town meeting, I am meeting my parents halfway up the eastern seaboard, and I will be driving up with them on their trip up from Florida. Make sure they get up to New Hampshire nice and safe and sound, so, uh, I didn't make the date that with my parents, I can't help that. We all have parents. So, um, the only other thing left we have is a minute, so, if somebody wants to make a motion.
In front of town meeting and speak.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I, I nominate Jim Freitz to stand up in front of town meeting and speak.
I second that, I second that, well, motion's been made and supported, uh, any further discussion?
I'm gonna be moving you to pick up, uh, Sharon and Norm, so.
An inappropriate motion, and, uh, it's out of order, Mr. Vice Chairman, you should know better.
And, and you know I have Sharon and Norm's number, so I may be gonna go with.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was gonna say, he's gonna call my parents, and make that, make that eastern seaboard trip a miserable one.
I can almost see Tim sweating, oh.
Alright, does somebody wanna make a motion on the minutes? If not, we're within the timeframe, I think we can wait till the next meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I, I have a motion to adjourn, I need a second.
Second.
Motion made, supported, roll call vote, Deb Robbins. Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Debbie, I, thank you, aye, Jim Freitz.
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye, Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye, Bob Jones.
Aye.
Aye, and Kevin Damaris, says aye. David, thank you very much, uh, for being here, you are our silent partner in this whole deal, I do appreciate you, and I know the rest of the board does, too, so. You will have your chance soon enough, my friend, I promise you that. Um, so, uh, that being said, everybody, be safe.